I'm sorry. We have a presentation scheduled with the Wildcat Group, so project update. So I think we're ready for that now. I'm sorry for the delay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thank you all for letting us be here tonight and give y'all an update on our project. We have put together a few slides. Just background on Wildcat, aside from our real estate department, we do have sand and aggregate operations in Grayson County and over near Fort Worth, along with some ready mixed plants in Gunter and also another ready mixed plant over in Fort Worth. We have focused on all aspects of development from acquisitions, entitlement, procurement, sales, all that kind of stuff that we're implementing, you know, into every deal that we do, not only here but across the metroplex. Some key achievements on the Green Belt project right there just south of Interstate 30. We started in January of 2020, which was right around the time that COVID hit us. But we did facilitate a land sale to Tractor Supply. We facilitated the development and construction of the Freestone Apartments. So that's 300 units, you know, three-story walk-up market rate, Class A apartment complex. We also constructed Phase One of Monte Stratton and Traders Road. That helped obviously serve kind of our entertainment district and the Freestone Apartments. We have completed a water line on 1570 that goes from 1570 down to about Cawdy Crossing and up onto Cawdy Crossing. We have also completed a kind of an off-site sewer line that comes off of the sewer line on Cawdy Crossing, comes down to the south, kind of touching in right there at 1570. We are constructing the Disc Golf Park. We have zoned and entitled 168 build-for-rent units along 1570. We have zoned and entitled about 100 platted 50-foot lots and another 216 lots kind of up near Wesley Street and Interstate 30. So I'm sure you're all familiar with the Green Belt, but it is a 325-acre kind of master plan development that gives residential, multifamily, commercial, cultural, and entertainment spaces. It's going to have family-friendly parks, Disc Golf Park, hike-and-bike trail, and all that good stuff. Here's a depiction of our master plan. This is what we call the Green Belt North. This is everything situated along Interstate 30 and Wesley Street. So to kind of give you a like a 300-foot view, Bruton Chevrolet is up the southeast corner of Monte Stratton and Interstate 30 there. So just to the east of that is our entertainment district. And then south of the Traders Road that we built is the 300 multifamily unit housing development. We've got some restaurant pads along the interstate, single-family over on Wesley Street. We have a retail development that I'll talk about here in a minute, the Disc Golf Park, and some future retail self-storage. Here's a depiction of the three parcels, well, four parcels that we have down on Cawdy Crossing and 1570. The triangular piece to the southernmost site plan is the 168-unit build-for-rent development. We did the first PD in the city of Greenville. We also have the 150-foot by 120 lots right there on the north side of Cawdy Crossing. And then the little, the smaller square, we really just have site planned right now for some townhomes, but there's currently no zoning on that property. This is the Tractor Supply that we sold back in 2020, right there off Wesley Street. These are the Greenville Freestone Apartments, about a $65 million apartment development that will, I've heard they are opening their clubhouse sometime around mid-March, and those units should be coming online in June of this year. These are the before and after pictures of Monte Stratton Parkway that we built. We, of course, took out the old Monte Stratton and built four lanes and, you know, some pretty massive crossings there. And then here's the before and after of Traders Road. So it currently stops at the easternmost boundary line of the Freestone Apartments, and Traders Road Phase Two will begin shortly. We have the Greenville Disc Golf Park. We've been battling with that one a little bit because of all the rainfall we've seen in the past few months, but, you know, we're finalizing the Disc Golf Park. Here are some photos of the Disc Golf Park after some slight rainfall. And we are working in the floodplain here. So every, all the rain that comes, you know, it comes to Greenville, and it's going to impact that floodplain. I mean, it's gonna, it makes it very hard to get a bulldozer back in there when it rains. So we have been dealing with that over the past few months. Here's kind of the latest depiction of our entertainment district. We've got pad sites along Interstate 30. We're talking with some national retailers, and so they'll take up the frontage right there on Interstate 30. We also have some site plans for some office space and stuff along Traders, and then we'll fill in the rest with some more retail users. Like I mentioned before, we do have a 37,500-square-foot Wesley Street retail development that's soon to kick off. All of our plans are, if they're not finalized, they're at 98 or 99%. It's a little over 50% pre-leased, three buildings. We've also got some flex space and self-storage that we're soon to develop. And we have also recently kind of signed a pre-development agreement with a developer out of Atlanta, Georgia, Thrive Senior Living Community. We're aiming to have about 120 units. 60 of those will be assisted living, or excuse me, about 60 will be independent, 40 assisted, and then we'll have about 20 memory care units. Here's a quick exhibit of the public improvements that are soon to come. Traders Road Phase Two is outlined there in green. We have down below on 1570, Cawdy Crossing comes up, and it's depicted in blue. And then we do have two spine roads that will need to be built on the development to kind of draw some traffic, maybe off of Wesley Street or off of Traders, to get kind of further around town or into our development. Here's some quick shots of the Wesley Street Retail. This is a short ride up on Thrive Senior Living. They develop, you know, senior living facilities nationwide. I think Jeremy, he is the main principal, he has done 47 of these retirement communities since 2008. He manages all of his properties, whether he continues to own them or sell them. He does continue to manage them. He's got a great-looking product, and he is doing one in Fort Worth. And so while this is just a rendering of the one in Fort Worth, I do want to say that this is the vision that we're going for, something that is a nice product and that people will want to, you know, want to live there and that kind of thing. And then here's the depiction of the conference center and the hotel that at, you know, one time we had had a developer lined up to build both hotels and a conference center. But that was back in kind of right after COVID, interest rates soared, and he wasn't able to move forward at that time with this hotel. We did do a McCaslin feasibility study. This is, it came back very strong, even though this was done in 2020 during COVID. It still came back to say that the number for potential events can be held, and that's 817 events. So there is a strong market to have a conference center in Greenville. But at that time, when the hotel developer was looking to build, interest rates kind of put a squeeze on him. So that's kind of our, that's our update. I do want to field some questions that y'all might have, and if you have any questions regarding that or anything else that I might not have mentioned, I'd love to answer those.
Is that the 817 number, is that annual?
Yes, sir. And again, that was done in 2020. I had asked them to do maybe another study, and, you know, thinking that in 2025 now, that study could come back a lot stronger. But I still think 800 events a year, that can be held here in Greenville is a pretty staggering number, so.
Can I ask, because I went to Hopkins County event a couple weeks ago, the hospital available, and I was talking to their event manager down there. They had 521 events at that facility in 2020. There's only 365 days in a year, I think.
That's right. Yes, sir. Well, that's not our number. That is McCaslin's number, but it is, it is a strong number.
I think the need is there.
Jack, I was going to ask you about interest rates being what they are. They're not likely to change substantially in the foreseeable future enough that it would change the calculus of what you're talking about here. We're not going back to 2.5%, right? So what's the plan for getting a developer onboard to build this?
To get a developer onboard to build the conference center?
Yeah.
It would take, you know, we had been trying to figure that question out ourselves on a day-to-day basis. We have been having some talks with some private, public-private partnership consultants, just trying to understand what that market looks like. And it seems that everything that kind of comes back from him, from his point of view, is that there's got to be some type of maybe participation, you know, throughout the community or the city or whoever that entity may be. But when the developer looked at building that, he was going to build both kind of simultaneously. And when interest rates did what they did, he was, his performance was at like, you know, 2.5%, 3% or whatever it was, and it jumped to 7 or 8. And so it threw the whole thing out of black, and he, he looked at building, maybe, maybe he could just do his hotel, but then it was, he didn't want to build his hotel without the conference center and vice versa, so.
So again, given that the interest rates are unlikely to go back to where they were, does that mean that you, so you're mentioning the idea of participation, which I take to mean public financing, unless you mean something different? But what else? Is there, is it no longer economically feasible with interest rates as they are? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that is, that's a good question. Yeah.
Sure.
I'll introduce Skeet Sherman. Skeet is the CEO of Wildcat, so he'll help field that question a little bit.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Appreciate you giving us time. To answer your question, we've met with multiple banks. In fact, we had a meeting here, I don't know, six, eight months ago with the mayor and Summer and Daniel, who brought a bank in from South Texas, and they brought some consultants in. And unless you get, in current environment, unless you get city participation, it's not going to be built privately because no bank's going to take the risk if it doesn't work. It's going, they're going to work, it just takes time to get there, and that's always been the struggle. I mean, we've, I can't tell you how many people we've talked to. Had a guy in our office yesterday talking about PPPs and how that would work, and it's going to take some support, and, you know, whatever that shall be. And we communicate with the mayor on a pretty regular basis, and I know the desire is to have something, but to get there is going to take some community support. We're all, in fact, as the mayor knows, that we're prepared to contribute property to the deal to make it work at no cost. We'll do whatever it takes on our side to make it work, but a bank is not going to make us a loan for a 10 or $15 million conference center without having some support. That's, in my previous history, I've done several of these with cities, one over in East Tennessee. We did a very large convention center. They needed it. And we kind of had a private, this is 20 years ago, a private placement memorandum we did together, and it worked great because the city signed up, and they basically had to guarantee a good portion of the debt. We were guaranteed too, but they knew we couldn't support, it was a 200,000-square-foot center. So that's kind of how it's going to have to work, and you're right, I don't think interest rates are coming back down. We hit it at the right time with our interest rates. We had a great developer, he's still, he's still around. He just can't make the numbers work. You know, the problem you got in agreement right now, there's a issue with your ADRs, you know, your rents. You want to have a good product, you want a Marriott or better Hilton product, as Terry knows, and you got to get the rates up to get that kind of product. And the only way you get there is you got to have support. I mean, the only people that got the money are you guys. I mean, developers can go so far, but this is a big deal. I know Jerry, we've talked so many times about, we need something big enough for 600 to 700 people, and that's about a 10 to $15 million, $13 million center. And we've had all kind of, I'll give you some of the ideas that come out, was if you could get economic development and chamber and maybe hospital people participating in the deal, with office space that offsets things. If you have anything that the city could do, meaning, I know you got down, you got a fire, I mean, a police station, but if you had some fire station or something attached, anything that kind of helps it to create more revenue or to create, you know, the way to spread it, spread the risk out. We'd love to do it, trust me, we'd love to do it. And quite frankly, we'd be happy to bring some of these consultants in here and meet with you guys, and let them tell you how it's worked in other towns. The guy in our office yesterday, he's done it that many times around Texas, in small towns, big towns, all over. And he can lay it out in all the details that maybe help you all to understand a little bit better.
When you said ADR earlier, what is that referring to?
Well, that's your average daily rate.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and in town, you don't, you need to get higher rates than you're getting here, and that's why the product mix you got here is kind of midpoint or lower point because they can't get the ADR. I mean, right now Greenville's kind of a transient market. A guy going from A to B stops here and spends the night. All the L3Harris people are over there at Rockwall because it's a better product. That's one of the issues, you know? If you could take that product and put it over here, I think you'd get, I don't know, 3,000 room nights or something like that that the L3Harris is sitting over there? That's a lot, a lot of business. Any other questions? I want to tell you, we appreciate y'all letting us come out here, and y'all have been very supportive. The mayor and even Dave Drowling, I started with Dave, he's been very supportive, and Summer, done a great job. We've been here now five years, and... We've been here now five years, and very happy to be here. We'd be here a long time, it's a big project.
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
Recently learned, I know, I think Mayor Drowling was still, he was still mayor when we approved that hundred and sixty-eight cottages on fifteen seventy. And now, as I understand, that property's for sale. It was, I, I thought it was our, our impression, I thought, okay, I won't speak for everybody, it was my impression when we zoned that, that you were going to develop that yourself.
We were going to develop. Our partner is Terry Horton, D R's brother, and Terry ended up having some issues where he couldn't deliver the product. So we ended up, we would never have got started if we didn't have Terry Horton involved. Well, Terry's no longer involved. We got the property, it's completely, plans are drawn, everything. Another issue is interest rates. When we first, back when we all approved it, we were around twenty-six, twenty-seven million dollars. Today, we're at forty million. And we can't, until, now, if Freestone does as well as they're hoping they're going to do with dollar eighty-five to dollar ninety rents, then may make our product something we get financed. It's all about financing, that's, that's the issue. Before, we could get it financed at dollar fifty rents, but now we need two dollar rents to make it work.
Since you brought me into the conversation, I know we've had numerous conversations, and we've talked about retail and specifically restaurants, and without naming any specific brand or any restaurant, do, do you have any?
We do.
Agreement signed with people?
We have.
And when do you think they'll start?
That's relied upon them. What's happened, Jerry, with a lot of these, is the same situation across the street that, that standbys happen. It takes forever to get some of these people, you get them committed, then you get an agreement, and then they want six months, nine months, twelve months for due diligence and all that. Like, right now, we've got, I can't name them, we've got some major, major players, just like across the street, that are on our property, we're probably going to get them signed up. Do we have them inked up to date? No. Do we have a lot of conversation? Yes. And they're really good ones. They're really good, and they're big. So we got, we got, I don't know, we, we got a lot, we got a lot going on the property right now. And once again, it's slow. What will really kick this property off, and I think will really make a lot of things happen, is when we get phase two of TRAERS done, and you connect to Wesley. I think TRAERS has become a major thoroughfare of people going that way to get on thirty, going down there to Monty Stratton. But once again, we got to get that started.
Do you have a plan for starting that?
Right now, we're waiting on your attorney, that Daniel knows about. The lady has been slow in getting her, getting everything finalized. If you could share something on that, I don't know.
Well, it's not really on the agenda. Melissa Cranford is who he's talking about, and the, uh...
That's okay.
Well, I don't have the work session agenda. What does it say specifically?
It's just Wildcat project update.
Um, yeah, Melissa's been working with them on the proposed changes to put in, not, not an expansion of the TURS, but an overlay development district. They signed a professional services agreement, basically, to pay her to do that, but I'm not sure where things stand right now.
Your last conversation.
We are finalizing and getting all the engineers' opinion about the cost of what phase two will actually be, before we can send it, put all that in a package and send it to Melissa or maybe Julie Ford or...
Yeah, sorry, Julie Ford is the, one of the other attorneys at the same firm, is Julie Ford.
And then, once we have all that spread away, that's when conversations can begin to implement something like this development district that Mr. Ray has talked about, like a public improvement district. So that's kind of where we're all moving forward with that. It gives us the ability to issue upfront bonds to help pay for the public infrastructure rather than waiting on a TURS reimbursement in three or four years below that maybe. Helps the council a little bit, and then the TURS board and all that kind of stuff.
So be sure y'all understand what he just said, that if we had to wait for TURS money reimbursements, it gets outside the length of time that the bank is comfortable, okay? So we, we went ahead with Daniel's help, we researched by doing a public improvement district, which we can do an overlay, which costs the city nothing, goes to, goes to the, the property owners, and they can sell bonds upfront, so it takes most of the cost of the road, it just speeds it up. We'll be able to start here in the next, hopefully, next three to four months, when we start the road. If we had to wait for the TURS, it'd be, be a while. It's critical to us to get that road in, and so. Anyway, it's, things are always going slower than you hoped they'd go out there, and we've been out five years, hardly been out there five years, but things, you know, COVID set everything back quite a bit, but we, we got a lot of traction, and I think y'all are going to be pleased, a lot of stuff that you can see coming down the road for you.
Okay, are there any more, any more questions, council members, for Mr. Sherman? If not, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming over here tonight.
All right.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will go into executive session. We expect to come back for the regular session at, at six o'clock. So thank you for being here tonight, and we'll be back in an hour or a little less.
Thank you for coming tonight. Let the record be flat, it's about 6:05. I'll ask Chief Chris Smith to come offer the invocation, please. Please stand and remove your head.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Lord, we come before you today grateful for the opportunity to serve our community. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we discuss the matters before us. Help us to lead with integrity, humility, and fairness, always seeking the best for those we represent. Lord, you have called us to be servants and stewards of this community. We ask that you lead us in every decision we make. May our words be filled with grace, our actions be just, and our hearts be aligned with your will. Lord, you taught us to love our neighbors and seek the good of others. Let your peace and unity be present among us so that we may work together for the well-being of all. Bless this city, its leaders, and its people. May all we do bring honor and glory to you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have several presentations tonight. The first presentation is introduction of Uriah Brown, the new Director of Human Resources. Summer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna make her stand up while I talk about her, so you can come on up. We hired Uriah Brown. She's our Director of Human Resources and our Civil Service Director. She comes to us from the city of Bulk Springs. There she was the Assistant Director for Human Resources, and she also served the city of Grand Prairie in several different capacities, which included Human Resources Advisor, Human Resource Operations Administrator, Administrator, Human Resources Manager. She's got over ten years in experience in operations management, civil service, budget project management, recruiting and retention, benefits administration, training development, performance management, employee relations, wellness engagement, and organizational strategy. She received her Bachelor's of Science in Human Resource and Health Promotion. She also has her Master's in Public Health, Education and Promotion, and she will be receiving her Master's of Public Administration in Municipal Government in May of 2025. So, we're gonna hopefully congratulate her on that. And so, we're excited to welcome her to our leadership team, and she started with the staff February 3rd, and she has been coming back, so.
Every day.
She came back this week, so we're excited.
Thank you.
How are you feeling?
I'm just happy to be here. I've been in the area for about fifteen years. I'm originally from New Orleans, but I've lived in Caddo Mills for thirteen years. I'm now in Royce City for the last three years. I just love the area, and I'm happy to be here. That's it.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next item on the presentations is item B, recognize the promotion and administration oath of Officer Freddie Guante. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. We got to a position where we were allowed to promote another sergeant. So, Officer Guante, along with four other people, signed up for the test. Officer Guante outperformed everyone, and he made it. And so, with your permission, I'll do an informal kind of a ceremonial swearing-in for him. He can speak if he wants to, but probably not. Are you ready?
Aye.
Aye, Freddie Guante.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I faithfully execute.
That I faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Greenville Police Sergeant.
Of Greenville Police Sergeant.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
No, just thank you.
For the opportunity.
Freddie, ever since I've been here, Freddie's been one of those officers that's always stepping to the front, doing more, and this is just another example of him stepping forward to take a responsibility and trying to make a difference. And we're really excited to have him as one of our new supervisors.
Chief, I've never seen anybody administer the oath without notes.
Mayor, I think we've hired like, I don't know, thirty people in the last three years. I'm a slow learner, but I think I've done it.
Good job.
Good job.
I have a proclamation tonight, but I don't know that we have anybody to proclaim it to, right? So, I want to proclaim, I'll just stand here and do Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month affords special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation, and whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all of our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and property. Now, therefore, the city council hereby designates the month of February 2025 as Black History Month and urges all of our citizens to join in making this a period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people. So, it's important that we do that, and I don't know if you'd like this proclamation. We usually give it to somebody, but I think I'll present it to councilman.
I've been back there when I had to go in the back doors, so I know what it means to strive for better for all, not only blacks, for everybody. But the whole thing, pal, I mean, Mayor, is this. It has to be a heart transplant. People need heart transplants that changes their attitude and their heart about other people. In order to get that, you have to go a little higher than anything on this planet, and that's my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. If you get him, he will help you on getting a heart transplant. That you all, we all treat people the way they should be treated, no matter what color, creed, or nationality they may be. That we treat everybody with respect in all areas. And that's what I mean. We need a heart transplant. If you get people to get that way, I think our country and our citizen would be a better place for everybody.
Amen. Thank you. That was very good. Thank you. I'll call your attention now to two placeholders in the agenda. Citizens to be heard and public testimony. Citizens to be heard on items not already scheduled for public hearing are listed on the agenda, and public testimony occurs when citizens want to address the council on items that are on the agenda. There are no public hearings or ordinances tonight, so that will start with item 8A. So, if you would like to address the council on any of these issues, please present a citizen's comment card to the city secretary. Other citizens?
John Kelso.
Please state your name and address when you come to the council.
John Kelso, 6005 Horn Drive, Greenville, 75402. I promised you last meeting I'd come back and talk to you about the property on 69. As you're coming into Greenville from Lone Oak, right where 69 splits to Business 69 and 69, and we have our new "Welcome to Greenville" sign. The property right behind that "Welcome to Greenville" sign is what I want to talk about. It's about a thirteen-acre tract. Why am I talking about it? Well, like I said last time, I don't want to come down here three years from tonight and try to encourage you to do something or not do something, and you say, "Well, we've been working on a project for three years for this, and so, we have to do this. We've been working on it for three years." So, I'm trying to come three years in advance and talk about it. One of the things that, anytime you're doing a zoning change, you have five questions you ask, and of those five questions, two of them relate to adjacent property. Question three asks, will the proposed use be compatible with and/or enhance adjacent residential areas? Question four asks, are uses adjacent to the proposed use similar in nature in terms of appearance hours of operation, other general aspects of compatibility? So, let's talk about the adjacent property to this property. On the north side is a cemetery and Fletcher Warren Civic Center, City Civic Center. On the south side is a business, a bank on the corner, and a church, and the city-owned dog and cat rescue center. On the west side, adjacent to this property, is some single-family, I think it's SF3, and more retail. There's a donut shop. Catty corner from this property adjacent is a gas station and a convenience store, and then a veterinarian office next to that. So, I hope I'm explaining to you, and you understand, this property, there's nothing adjacent to this property that would say, "We need high-end, high-residential, high-density residential or residential of any density in this area." This is not a good fit for anything related to residential or high-density residential. Just look at the adjacent property that really don't have anything to do with that. So, I would encourage you, if anybody comes in to the office tomorrow wanting to talk about zoning this for residential, just tell them, don't waste three years of our time planning something that really is not a good fit for this property. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Kelso. Are there other citizens? Okay. Okay, we'll move into item 8A, resolutions, consideration and action on resolution appointing Uriah Brown as the Civil Service Director for the city of Greenville. Summer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As you know, with the hiring of her as the Director of Human Resources, she would also become the Civil Service Director. And if you recall, in her absence after Sherri had passed, we had a couple of items that dealt with civil service, including a police test, a fire test, and a couple things. So, in the interim, we hired a consultant to serve as that Civil Service Director, and that's who we have currently appointed. Since Uriah has now started on February 3rd, we'd like to appoint her as Civil Service Director. There will be some things that Ms. Shields that served for us would finish up with the Civil Service Commission, but once that's finished, then we would no longer need her, and so then Uriah could take over from there. So, we just asked that she would be appointed as Civil Service Director.
And I'll just ask, generally, is there any public testimony for any of these items tonight? Okay, so I won't ask for that on any of these items. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand. What is, are there any questions for the council regarding this appointment? If not, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this issue?
Proof.
Second, please vote. And unanimously, item 8B, consideration action on a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Latora Anderson as the city planner, city of Greenville. Summer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you guys recall, back in 2022, we hired Latora Anderson as our city planner. As you guys recall, uh, back in 2022, we hired, um, Latora Anderson as our city planner to serve in that capacity. We had several projects, um, that she was working on. She has completed a few of those projects, one being the comprehensive plan. Um, so her contract will end in, uh, February 28th of 2025. Um, she do, she does still have a few projects she's completing. Number one being the downtown, which you guys have identified in a goal, um, and added that to one of the council goals this year. So we'd like to be able to have her, uh, complete that project, um, as well as, um, she's very, she's been very instrumental in implementing the new community development software of Intergov. She's been very, so she's still continuing to do that as well. So we, uh, we asked that we extend this contract, the current one that we had at the same, uh, rate at $50 an hour. We've put it in the budget, um, and extend it for a year with maybe the option to come back if, if those projects aren't completed, because she still does have some zoning, um, with Steve, which he thinks that's, um, close to being ready and updating that zoning map and those things like that, uh, working with our GIS analyst as well in that department. So we'd like to at least keep her on for at least another year.
Okay. And there is a limit in that contract, I believe, to 50,000?
Yes, up to 52,000. That's correct. And that's what we put in the budget.
Okay, any questions from the council regarding this item 8B? Not, what is the pleasure of council regarding this, uh, proposed consulting agreement, I'll call it?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion second, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item 8C, consideration and action on a resolution authorizing an increase in the existing purchase order in the amount of $175,800, uh, through WPI for a water treatment plant generator installation. GP, you hear?
If you, you or I both can, either one of us can talk about it. Uh, Mayor, what this is, is, um, if you remember back during COVID, um, we decided to institute generators for all of our critical facilities. Um, this, all of those facilities, with the exception of the water treatment plant, have been completed. Um, the, the, obviously the generator at the water treatment plant is quite large. It's going to be coming on an 18-wheeler, so there was some logistical, um, items that happened on, on, uh, Waukesha Pierce's end. Um, when, when they originally quoted us, it was going to be $49,000 to install that. Um, well, they actually had some electricians come out that we trusted that work on several items and projects out at our plant. Um, turns out that the change order that you see before you is what the real installation cost is going to be, which is 175,000. Um, and so we need to get that, we have that generator, they have it built for us, they have it down in Houston. Um, we just need to get it installed, get it done, uh, and get that taken care of. And that's what this change order will take care of. Um, because it is a part of the, um, the water treatment plant, we did have, um, interest earnings from the bond money that we did for the raw water line and the water treatment plant project, bond projects. Um, so there's nothing that's going to be coming out of anybody's budget or anything like that. We'll be using the interest earnings to pay for that 175,000. Um, so to get this installed, um, we do currently have a generator there now. It's just not large enough to run the entire plant, which this generator would, um, run the entire plant, uh, to certain capacities.
This can place generators for all of our facilities.
For all of our critical facilities. Yes, that we would need in times of, you know, what really sparked this, if you guys remember, was, uh, the snowmageddon or winter storm Yuri. Um, that really sparked it, because we got, uh, close to, you know, items, um, that we weren't going to be able to operate if it got to a certain level. But now we shouldn't have any problems. Um, we've had a few storms, um, in the summertime and also in the wintertime, uh, for, especially for this building, PD, um, the others, you know, Civic Center, we have Reese Davis, that one's actually down now because they're renovating, but, um, that those have kicked on and it's been very beneficial. So I think this would just complete that, um, and complete, and that way our wastewater treatment plant and our water treatment plant would be, would, would run regardless of where we're at electricity-wise.
Any questions from the council? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item 8D, consideration and action on a resolution admitting the city agreement of employee personnel manual establishing Juneteenth, which is, uh, June 19th, everybody knows, as a, uh, as a holiday. And I ask that this item be placed on the agenda. I think, uh, about four years ago, the Biden administration made this a national holiday. And I think it's consistent with our history in Texas and some of the reasons that Juneteenth is actually named, that we adopt this as a holiday, a holiday in perpetuity for our city employees and JUICE employees. Are there any questions? Counsel? Okay. Any comments? None? If there are none, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this issue?
Who's this?
I'll second that.
Please vote. And it, uh, passes unanimously. Item 8E, consideration and action on a resolution approving a change order with MH Civil Constructors, Inc. for a header project to Waukene Pump Station.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm here to talk to you about approving this, uh, proposed change order for this temporary bypass for Lake Tewaquene Pump Station. Uh, the City Council, y'all made the decision in 2021 to sell some certificates of obligation in the amount of 50, 50 million to replace the raw water line, which is, that's the only source of water for the City of Greenville with this new water line. And, uh, it went out to bid October 7th, 2023, and, uh, October 14th, 2023, and it went out of the Greenville Arrow Penner, and, uh, we had a pre-bid meeting. Um, the sealed builds, the said, the sealed bids were open on Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, and the City Council ordered it to MH Civil, uh, for the, uh, for the amount of 32,939,000 dollars. Uh, as a part of this raw water line, we also threw in the header project. We sent it out to bid at first, nobody bid on it, so we kind of put it together, and MH Civil got it also. Well, with this raw water head, uh, header, um, what we're doing is we're replacing 27-inch header that's down there with two 36-inch headers, so we'll be able to run multiple pumps on two different headers. We'll be able to run the 27-inch line and the 36-inch line at one time when we need it, especially with the demand that we're having with the City of Greenville, uh, and all our wholesale customers and industrial. Uh, and basically, that's, that's why we're here. We want to be able to make sure we're able to keep up with the demand and keep the water flowing to, to our reservoirs. And, and, and approving this change order will help us get to that point where, you know, we get the header project done. And basically, what they're going to do is they'll turn the pumps 180 degrees, install some temporary, uh, piping, and tie back into the raw water line while they're repairing or replacing or rehabbing the header unit that we have now. And we'll be able to keep pumping as they're doing the work. It's going to take about four months to do the work, they say. So those four months, we'll still be able to continue to pump and keep water flowing to the reservoirs for our citizens. So basically, that's what it is. We have the funds available. Um, it will be coming from the other allocated from the raw, the Tewaquene Raw Water Line replacement project, and, uh, that lump sum is 285,716 bucks to do this project. So we're here to ask if, if, uh, if y'all will consider this and approve it.
Any questions for Rob? And I might add, he was the part of the, a part of the challenge for the cap, I'm aware of, so.
Look at looking at.
Anyway, uh, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this issue?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Yes, that was a very good job. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
It passes unanimously, by the way. Consider an action, a resolution, appointing a member of the Board of Development and, and, uh, for an unexpired vacancy. Daniel, would you like to address this issue?
Well, we've got, uh, all of the, uh, appointments listed for the, uh, people that are, uh, need to be added or replaced. Um, and I think that there's, uh, going to be a motion to add several people to several open spots, and then, uh, one to, uh, remove one of the members of the Board of Development, uh, and to replace that person with another, uh, person. Uh, all of the rules that the city have to fol- has to follow on, uh, removing or replacing or adding new people are different, uh, for each board. Uh, but I've been over, uh, all of the proposals here, and they're all fully within the city's, um, or the council's ability to take action.
Thank you, Daniel. Are there any questions regarding Daniel's comments? If not, is there a motion?
I have a motion. A move that we remove Renee Shelton and replace her with Blake Taylor for the remainder of the place five unexpired term on the Greenville Board of Development.
Sure, second?
Second.
Please vote. And it passes unanimously. The next item is item 8G, consideration and action on resolutions, appointing members and naming chairman of following boards and commissions. I'd like to ask, uh, Mayor Protim Thomas to, uh, go with those for us, if you would.
Mayor? Uh, we finalized our interviews and resume, uh, reviews last week. Um, this might not be in the same order that you have. Go with my notes. What you just heard on the Greenville Board of Development, selected Blake Taylor, replaced Renee Shelton. Parks and Recreation, we selected Christian Washington, place one. Place two was Anna Tipton. Place three, Bob Vreek, I don't know how to pronounce that. And the chair remains on Mandy Stewart. The Library Advisory Board, Christian Washington also liked to serve on that board, and we approved that. Place three was Natalie Peg, who was already on that board and wanted to continue serving. And the chair remains Jimmy Hamilton. Planning and zoning, place eight, uh, Lonnie Doan was selected, and the chair will remain Bernice Brown. Substandard Structures Board, Glover George, who was already on that board, remains as the chair. And also, we picked Caroline Feath. Oh, hey, we left one off, sorry. And Lee Pierce is on that planning and zoning board, doing a great job. We are also. I didn't know if I could bring that up or not. Is that okay? Uh, Ben Collins, who is on the board and commission, election board, Mayor and I, uh, this young lady's, uh, showed a lot of interest in any board. And, uh, Ben has known her and her family for a long time and recommended putting her on plan. And that's my report.
Thank you. Is there any, are there any questions or concerns? If not, is there a motion regarding these appointments of board chairman and, and members of these boards and commissions?
Uh, move that we approve.
Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item 8H, consideration and consider approving the recommendation of the selection review committee to award by resolution the negotiation of a contract for engineering services pertaining to the application and implementation, if awarded, of the city's 2025, 2025, 2026, uh, Texas Department of Agriculture's grant authorizing execution of contracts. Summer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, as, if you guys recall, this was a $750,000 grant. Um, it's a block grant that, um, Chris, for infrastructure, it could be water, sewer, anything like that. And so, um, obviously, we're now to the point, uh, where we need to, we advertised for the engineering bids, and so now we needed to select them. Uh, the scoring committee consisted of myself, uh, Mayor Ransom, and Chris Harris, the Public Works Director. And then, um, Schaumburg and Polk, um, was one of them, and then Hater Engineering was the second. And so after that scoring was completed, um, then the recommendation by that committee was to award the contract for that block grant for 2025, 2026, uh, to Schaumburg and Polk.
Any questions? What is the pleasure of the council regarding this item 8H?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion second, please vote. It passes unanimously. Item 8I, consideration and action on a resolution approving the submission of a grant application to the United States Department of Justice. Chief Smith.
Yes, Mayor, this is, uh, requesting permission to ask for a grant from the Department of Justice through their Edward Brown Memorial Justice Assistance Program. It's for some investigative software that we think might be useful. What it does is you put in somebody's known identifiers, and it runs it through all social media. And comes back with different hits, if they have multiple accounts in different places. And so it's, it's, it's not something that we're comfortable getting, but if we can get a grant for it and try it out, we'd like to do that. So this would be no charge to the city if we get the grant.
Who's, who's writing the grant?
Uh, Sergeant Dallas Faust.
One, in, in, internally, you're doing?
Yes, sir. He's done it.
Congratulations.
Yeah, he's, uh, he's submitted for multiple grants. We have several people that are very good at writing grants for us, and we've gotten a lot of equipment through these grants and save the citizens a lot of money.
Are there any questions for Chief Smith? Is there a motion regarding this item?
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
Thank you, Chief. Please vote. And item 8I passes unanimously. I'd like the item 9A, and I'll do that for you tonight, Carla, is the only item is City Council minutes from the January 28, 25 meeting. Any questions or concerns about those minutes? Not? What is the pleasure of the council regarding item 9A?
A move that we accept the consent calendar.
Second.
Please vote. And it passes unanimously. And now we have city staff, city council reports, a monthly status report by the city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And this will be the status report for the end of December. So, um, at this junction, then we'll be caught up, uh, when I give you the January report at the end of, on the February 25th meeting. Um, so utility cuts, the number in December was down from 12 to 10. Uh, pothole repairs were down from, uh, 60 to 50, uh, also, obviously, in the colder weather, you know, when we get hot mix, that, it goes down. So we could hopefully, well, January was actually, last, last week was unseasonably hot, and I think they were producing hot mix then, so it'd have been okay. So that, we might be a little bit, uh, different in January this year. Uh, street sweeping miles were 134. Just a reminder that it's, uh, the downtown area is swept on a weekly basis. Uh, the mowed areas were a lot less. Obviously, grasses, grass and weeds aren't growing at this time of year, um, so that was at about 20%. We're still keeping those cleared, so when it does, uh, get to the point where we do have to, uh, clear it, same with the intersections that were cleared. There was only three of those in the month of, uh, December. Uh, signs replaced were same as last month, so 10 in the month of December. Uh, building permits issued were up from 21 to 31 for the month of December. And then if you recall, uh, the CO data was the data that I was not able to extract from the MyGov, um, since we changed. But going forward, uh, for the month of December, we'll be able to extract that data from, uh, Intergov, the new system. Everything from January 1st has been being kept, um, in the new system.
The 31 building permits?
Let me stop you real quick. The 31 building permits, are those mostly residential?
Um, I, I would assume so, um, because that's mostly what we're doing if they're the larger ones. Um, I don't, I, we just do building permits issued total. I don't break it down by residential or commercial.
Fair enough.
Um, if you'd want, if you'd like to, I could, I could dive into it a little bit deeper, um, if you'd like to. No?
All right.
No, it's fine.
I'll follow up with you later.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, and then also, it might be a little more difficult, especially for the months of November, December, because we don't have access to MyGov data. We're having to extract it and rebuild the database. We, um, we had to do that. So it might be, but going forward, it should be fine in Intergov. Should be able to identify and run reports with those. Um, traffic citations issued were 178 for the month of December. And then, uh, the raw water line, um, like Robert said, we're about to start on the, they're more than halfway to Lake Tewaquene, so they're, um, even working in the rain. I don't think they've been flooded out with this rain, because I think they're finally to a point where they're not in the floodplain, um, but they're still fusing. floodplain, um, but they're still fusing pipe, uh, contractors still putting pipe in the ground. Um, you're probably not going to see them as much as you have in the past, because they're, they're halfway to Tewaquen, so they're in the Lone Oak area, that area right now. Um, so, um, and that header project will start, um, we're trying to time everything where it's, uh, conducive to our water usage and things like that, and the contractors have been really good with that. Um, so that project's on time, um, there's been no significant delays, no significant change orders, um, with the exception of the one, um, that we brought in front of you tonight. Um, so on a $50 million project, I think that's pretty good so far. Um, and then planned street projects, those are the same ones that we had up last month, and that much has changed. Um, we are getting together, um, with, uh, the city engineer, Steve Glass, and Chris Harris, the Public Works Director, um, and we're going to be calling, they're getting a plan together to propose to myself, and then we will, uh, put those together with the funding, and then we will bring that before the transportation plan, um, before we actually, before we, um, ask council to approve any, and award any contracts on that street work for the money that we do have there. So we'll be bringing that in front of the Transportation Committee, um, pretty soon, and then we'll keep that, uh, momentum going from there. And then other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item 11, City Council Discussion of Proposed Agenda Items, are there any items that the council would like to discuss in the future? If not, you have the Boards and Commission Minutes, the Substandard Structure Board Minutes are, uh, have before you from July 2024. We have completed executive session, uh, won't be taking any action in executive session, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.